Alright, so I'll call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:09 PM. You'll join me in the pledge.
The flag of the United States of America. The Republic, the Constitution, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Don't believe we have public input. And we don't have any correspondence. That's not part of our reports. And I apologize that I can't do any screen sharing because I can't get my link to work without making all the feedback like we had a couple of meetings ago, which caused it to be difficult to hear anything anyone was saying. So we'll just go through approval of meeting minutes. So I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from June 12, 2024.
Second.
And I have a sort of amendment kind of thing. And I clicked on the minutes and they didn't open, but at some in the report on the police station, it talked about how much, we were talking about the budget and what I had come up with and that there was $145,000 in change orders. That's incorrect. Or vendors. So you can make that correction. That would be good.
Secondly.
Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed? And I don't think anybody here has to abstain. So I think we're good. So moving forward on the police station training range, one of the things I wanted to share were a couple of photographs of yesterday's ribbon cutting, which I got to go to. Kathy was there, Roy and John Perna, along with a couple of members of the police commission. It was small. Chief Finch was also there, which was great. He and Chief Pugner cut the ribbon. And then Chief Pugner spoke along with Chief Finch, Matt Nickerbacher and Dan Carter. Then we went inside and they did a second ribbon shooting. They had a ribbon across the berm trap. Nice. And Libertini shot it with a shotgun and they were good to go. So I can show you pictures later. And then we did the ribbon cutting and went inside where they showed us some of the bells and whistles, so to speak, of all the software that they have. It's very much a state of the art facility and it's gonna be great. Right now, the police department is doing training. So they're going through in small groups. So they've been doing it all week. Group in the morning, group in the afternoon. So they all know how to use the range and they know the procedures that they have to go through, protocol, lock, keeping, et cetera, et cetera. And right now, we have a temporary CO. And both Chris Baldwin and Laura Seal are going through. Everything is in place as far as all the reports they need. Everything's working the way it should be. CES issued their final report, yet Action Target hadn't issued their report and they had to combine them. So CES just sent around noon time. I was on the phone with Evan and they sent their amended report. So I sent that over to Health Department, Building Department, and they're reviewing all of that. Hopefully within a, maybe by next week, we'll be looking at having a CO. Because everything's complete. There's one little thing that Action Target was supposed to come. Today, there's each, so there's five lanes, but there's no lanes. It's one big open space. Traps have a laptop or a little iPad kind of thing that pulls down and you can tell the target what to do, et cetera. When they fold up, they hit the ceiling and they don't fold all the way up. It's a weird thing. So they were gonna make some adjustments today. Hopefully that'll be done soon. Hopefully they have done today. So, as I said, I spoke with Evan today as we were getting some things together. He got this budget report for us and Lieutenant Durkin, I'm sorry, I can't put it up on the screen, technical difficulties. But it's been updated and it's very much what I came up with. And I think Evan had a couple of numbers. We had gotten a bill from Action Target saying we owed them more money than, and I think he might have been using that number. There was a change order that we had never approved. So we're not gonna. And if you look at what we have, we have, we were holding 1,500 for the architect for reimbursables. And I think we got a bill for, I don't know, a hundred and seventy dollars or something like that. And Brian Hughes said today that there are no more reimbursables expected. So that will go up into contingency. And then I check, I'm checking in with, Evan is actually working on checking with network synergy. Because we approved an amount, $1,931 for their work. And not to exceed. And then we got a bill for 975, which we approved, sent it to finance, and then the spreadsheet I got from finance showed three different payments to network synergy over the 975. So the 975 plus two others resulting in an overage plus, I don't know why it went to without us approving it. So Durkin, I guess, dumped outman that. So we could have either 3,700 in contingency or 6,000 or, you know, 3,700 or 6,000 in contingency. And we have two invoices tonight that we will address and we will be expecting more invoices. We will get something from Action Target, retainage from Downs. We do have a Downs to do tonight and retainage is still outstanding. We need the corrected invoices invoice from STV. And we'll get an invoice from ESC and an invoice from CES. And all of that is actually committed to date. So that's in the that second from the right column. And it'll be, as I said, invoices that'll be coming in. So, basically, we're waiting on a TCO. I know that that both Evan, Evan had gone out there with Chikuski Hughes to walk around, look at everything. And they were all very happy with things that John Perna brought up about the ductwork that all got taken care of, other caulking and things like that was taken care of too. And Evan couldn't be here tonight because he's got another commitment now on Wednesday nights going forward. Angela's here. I don't know, Angela, if you have anything you wanna give us or any questions for Angela? I know we were, we've talked a few times and I think it was just like a bit of a misunderstanding as to who was gonna do what and how much you were gonna be able to do and how much we needed. So, but we've got a lot of that figured out. And I don't know if you have anything else you wanted to put in here.
Can you guys hear me okay?
You guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, there's a delay. Yeah.
Delay, yeah.
Alright, so there's a delay, but you can hear us. Okay.
Yeah, I'll try to delay, not distract me.
Not distract me.
I think it'll be okay as long as you don't sing.
Okay, so, um, so, um, I think, you know, from my perspective at the, at the, could have been, could have been April, beginning of May, we were, the project was, you know, pretty much, pretty much off and running and our campus was, used up all the hours. Place to call the Nancy, you know, saying, we can continue working, but it would mean that at that point in time, you guys were down to like and I didn't have any chance of getting another change order and continue working for compensation. So, you know, we thought it was just sailing, which is sailing, which is buttoned up. Nancy and I had a conversation, the committee as well, but, you know, we thought you guys were sort of okay. And as Evan has always said, it's not going anywhere. And, um, um, so, so we decided to not present a change order and sort of just ran back. And that was at the time. Going on vacation as well.
On vacation as well.
So we didn't attend that meeting. And then after that, you know, a couple issues. You know, the HVAC meeting, which we had been told by multiple people, we didn't really need to be there. But there was still some cleanup to do with that. And then this, um, certificate of occupancy thing became an issue as well. So Evan's actually been forcing Nancy and phone calls and emails and working, even though we haven't, we haven't change order yet. So I just, I just know that we haven't, we have, even without some,
even without some change.
Um, I don't have a calculation of how hours have been. Have been. That when we sent the invoices back, it was beginning of May, you know, it was only, you know, something like. Um, and again, we didn't, um, and again, we didn't, we knew you guys had little, you guys had little changes coming in from all over the place. We didn't want to be the ones to be like, hey, we have a change order. So we want you to proceed, we want you to proceed, have tonight. Contingency, going where? I don't, I thought that we sort of, we said, and we, we happy with the, how the current range turned out. And hopefully, hopefully you understand, you know, this project has progressed in a, not very. So, and Evan's been great. It's all in the budget with Nancy and all of that sort of. Like Nancy said, maybe at the next meeting, we'll, we'd like to see where you are tonight.
So the change order that, or the invoice that we got in May, beginning of May, which, you know, arrived a week after our meeting, I think it stated May 7th, is for, from the beginning of the year. So it's the January, February, March, April. So it's four months. It's for $4,816, which is over the amount that was contracted. So I think there are 3,000 something was left. And I had sent all that. So you're trying to figure that out with your accounting department, see where all those numbers came from. And then I don't know what above. So then from, you know, it's December 30th through 2023 through May 3rd, 2024. So beyond that, I don't know, you know, what's been, you know, what you're looking at. So I would have to, you would have to put something together to let us know. But we wanna get that invoice taken care of. So we wanna have a corrected invoice first.
Correct.
To that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And as Angela said, Evan's been doing what he can and a lot of the stuff was, you know, emails and phone calls. So we wouldn't see all that. And I know that the day that we had to have that whole shut the gas down, put the new meter in, put the new regulator, put the gas back on, get the MAU hooked up, get it started. He had planned that all out. And the only day that everyone could be there on the same day was the day he left for vacation. Not much we could do about that. It, John Perna thinks that somebody from STV should have been there, but I don't know if anybody else would have known the stuff that he knows. And there was nothing that anybody else could do because at last minute, the Aon guy didn't show. He called at 10 o'clock at night and said he couldn't come. So they got everything done, started it up, said, oh yeah, it's running, shut it back down. And then that was on Thursday, that following Monday, the Aon guy showed up, started everything up, everything got running. CES was there. Action Target put a couple of the police officers through some initial training just to make sure everything was working. The range equipment, MAU doing what it was supposed to do, the software doing what it was supposed to do, controls, ESC was there. CES was doing an onsite commissioning report. And actually, the guy that was there thought it was pretty cool, but, and then everybody else had to do their final reports and put them all together. And that's when we found out Action Target and Performance Mechanical didn't have permits. So we got all those put in place. That was a lot of wrangling, just figuring out who was gonna do what and then getting it done, which happened, which was great. And then.
Can I just interject in there? Uh, Angela, you know, I think from the previous meetings, I think we were all pretty surprised. I mean, there was a total radio silence from you guys, you know, including Evan, after John Perna had spent considerable amount of time setting everything up and then, you know, nothing. And then nothing, even to have the courtesy to be at some of these meetings that at least we could know what's going on. So needless to say, glad to see someone's back. Glad to see that we're at least trying to resolve it. But really, for two months there, Nancy has been pulling all the weight. And, and no, I, you know, you know, I just wanna get this out because, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very upset with how we've been treated. So I'm just being totally honest with you. I have never seen a company just pull up and be gone. And then all of a sudden, you know, I'm actually a little surprised that you're even here. I mean, I, I thought this was, you know, it was evaporating. So I, I, I wouldn't think that that's the way you can treat your clients after X amount of years. I can't even imagine been at least 10 years that we've been dealing with you. Well, gotta be close to it. So I, I just, you know, I've been in business 40 years and I've never had a client treat us like, treat us like that. That, that was, you know, unconscionable. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. I just wanna, I just wanna get it out and let you know how we feel, how I feel.
Right. And I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, we, we didn't this week here. Evan was your constant contact with Nancy, phone calls and emails the entire time. He didn't go to the meetings. Our contract had expired.
Expired.
You know, we, we had communicated with all of the, and, and everybody was, was gonna, and I know John Perna thought we should, Evan immediately communicated that all this single person was supposed to be at that meeting for the startup. They all agreed we did not need to be there. Also communicated, there was a meeting right before one of the building committee meetings. We knew we couldn't be at, discussing the Downs change order. And Evan was in with the meeting with, with priority. And we gave our opinion so that you were prepared for that next meeting, willing we weren't going to be there. So I'm sorry you had that impression that we disappeared, but we did, we were working behind the scenes the entire time. The fact that we did not attend the public building committee meetings is not a reflection at all of what our services have been. I mean, anytime Nancy called or emailed, we were.
Don't worry your services are unless we see you here. Okay? That's the way I look at it. That's, that's real simple.
Well, and I, I just wanna make a correction of that, that the whole startup of the MAU changing the regulator and everything was set up by Evan, not John Perna. John Perna was on site.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
He took some time off from work. So I can understand his frustration of Evan not being there, but at the same time, Evan didn't need to be there because all the people who were there said that they could do the work. They didn't need Evan. And then the AM guy didn't show up.
Yeah, but then I was saying he's on vacation. No one knows what's going on. You know, it's just, just no way to wait for jobs.
I'm sorry, but people didn't know what was going on. We haven't took the time to coordinate with every single, every single day that makes sure.
I, I, let me just clear it up here. When was the last time Evan's been in front of this group?
It was April, the end of April.
Okay. That's two months ago, two and a half months ago.
I, I understand.
And I don't think it's unreasonable. I don't think it's unreasonable to see our representative here. Or, you know, we, we have no idea where he is.
I understand. And if you let me explain a little further, so we schedule our staff for a certain period of time. This project has been delayed after delay. Evan has moved on to other jobs. I can't pull it back. I'm claiming that we've scheduled, we schedule every single week. Look at how long an employee is gonna hold, how many hours with every kind of, it's the way you have it. Right? So we can't have an employee just calling of every single client. We often keep them moving on to other projects. Right? And we took the time to make sure that all the information needed for those building committees that we did not attend.
And I understand that, that process of having to do your scheduling and thinking that, that, you know, and, and think about back in February, we were told, oh, end of February, we should be done. And here we are, it's the end of June and we're still not getting done. We had some things thrown into the works that messed things up pretty.
That's, that's the way the building industry is. And that's, that's why we have a representative.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We also have to have some communication. And again, it would have been someone at a meeting would have been just saying, Angela, someone at a meeting saying, here's where we are, where, you know, I know some of it was coming to me and I would say it at meetings, yet having one of you at the meeting saying it to us would have been, I think, more helpful.
Well, I, in retrospect, yes, but I guess we felt like we would have been repeating ourselves. So much work to prepare for the meeting and then knowing we couldn't attend and to be able to come on and repeat what we don't need to keep in place. You know, for, especially when we're doing it without an extended contract, no sign off unless we're in charge or hours. Our, the other confusing thing, a lot of people get confused on our industry. Our industry, our services are hourly, not a fixed fee. So that's why we have to continue having the change orders way back, way back before I even worked for STV. You guys were even looking at having an offer. And then when you brought one on, we all thought this was gonna be pretty simple, right? It all got very complex, more and more. So retrospectively, if you look back, our contract hourly kept getting exceeded. What I'm hearing is that you, it looks like you were expecting us to do the work without being compensated.
I'd like to clear the air on that. I think the town has paid their bills pretty fairly all for the past 10 years. Is that correct?
They paid us for what we had, so it's correct. That's not what I'm saying.
Okay. So, so wouldn't there be a little bit of courtesy? If you thought the contract was over, that's fine. Tell us what we're talking about. Tell us how many hours you're looking at. Tell us what you think it might be, but don't just walk away.
Okay, again, we didn't feel we got away.
It's real simple. We'd like to see a rep here. We'd like to have a face.
Okay, I felt I explained myself. I'm sorry, we're in a disagreement.
No, I, I disagree. So that's where we are.
And, and, and I,
Respectfully disagree.
Right. And I would like acknowledgement of the fact that we have been continuing to work without being compensated.
Well, then put together your bill and let's see what it is.
As I just mentioned, we would like to be,
If you've known about this, if you've known about it the whole time, you should put it together and tell us where you are in this.
At the beginning of my statement, we wanted to be courteous to you and have you take care of the other change orders from the other communities. And I would think that you would recognize that as being very generous of you.
And there is a invoice that we still have to pay. It just needs to be corrected for STV is what I'm saying.
Right. I mean, we're not jamming invoices down your throat. We're trying to let you take care of the rest of the job first. We're trying to be nice. We're trying to be nice.
Yeah. And I think that, Angela, I was saying, I think it was unclear to me. And then everyone else threw me how much we could expect from STV, especially when we got, got in the mess with the permit and all that kind of stuff. So it was unclear.
I mean, remember like contingency went really far at the end of April and we said, oh, no way, they're gonna compensate us. But yet we stayed with our phone calls and emails and we attended a justice.
Yep. Okay. All right. So we need to get a corrected invoice. We already said that. We are working on that. And then we will go from there. And Evan's got a couple of things he's working on for us now.
Still, yes.
Still, yes.
He's had a couple of emails out. So there were a couple of things that came up. I don't know if you were there when Lieutenant Libertini was talking about the heating and cooling part of the makeup air unit and how he, last week, when it was really, really hot, he went in, it was 87 degrees. Turned the whole thing on, it cooled down really quickly. But there's, there are set points for the cold and the hot where it's not going to, it's not gonna get, it's not gonna turn the system on, but it's gonna put an alarm somewhere so somebody can go down and check on it. So they're looking into that. They wanna make sure, not so much with the heat, but the cold and the sprinklers. So they wanna make sure those work.
Well, we've discussed multiple times, and I know John was in it, with a night setback for the heating and cooling that it reached X degrees.
Yeah.
The unit should come on and run for, till it reaches, you know, goes up three quarters degrees.
Right.
And vice versa. And I know that was discussed because I know,
That's what we wanted.
Action Target had said that the computers can only run X. I know that, I know those are up somewhere else, but you all have the electronics in the back where the molars and all that are, which are supposed to remain at
Right.
X percentage of humidity and temperature as well. So that's something that maybe it's an ECS thing that.
Well, that's, so Evan's got emails into ESC and they're checking on it. And, and so then we're gonna look to find out what we get out of that.
Okay.
He also had, he, other than the budget, was looking into, oh, network synergy. Well, I said earlier about them giving us a proposal that we agreed on. And I have to go back and see like what date that was signed and all. And they've exceeded that with the three invoices that they sent, one of which was approved by us, the other two which were approved by the police department. It makes me think maybe those are out of the police department's operating budget, not out of us. So,
Yes, we separated it out.
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking, that's what he's looking into with network synergy. Cause I already asked finance and they showed me all the paperwork that they have on it. It says approved, not police department operating budget, range budget. And I'm like, we didn't approve it. So it's like $1,400. But still, we should not be paying if it's not supposed to be part of it. So he's looking into that too. So he'll let us know when he finds out what's going on with that. Because the, the first network synergy proposal we got was about 1,300 something, maybe 1,400. And then a second one that was 19 something. And that's the one that I was going with. And what we've paid already, something like 2,100. So he's looking into that. We'll get that figured out. So, um, what else? Oh, we have invoices, but I don't know if we have anything else that, so, yeah. I'm sorry I couldn't show you photos and what, and that. And you got a paper copy of the budget review. I can make sure everybody gets or get somehow post this one. Cause it just came in this morning. And it's very much similar or the same as what I came up with when I was looking at all the figures. When we kept getting weird numbers, like we only had $185 left. Didn't say, I knew we had more. Uh, so invoices. I will make a motion that we approve Chikuski Hughes Architect's invoice number 24171. I can't put it up on the screen. It's for $2,500, which is the balance of their contract.
A second.
John, second. If there's any questions or anything on this? All in favor?
Right.
I opposed, done. And the second is, as I said, an application for payment from Downs. So I will make a motion that we approve application for payment number eight from Downs Construction in the amount of $11,700, or $11,875.
Second.
Roy, second. So I'll just say that the balance to finish, including retainage, is $18,923.83. And that'll probably be on the next, once we're ready to release retainage. So any other questions on this? All in favor?
Right.
I opposed. We are done with that. And so then we'll be looking for other invoices from, as I mentioned, several other companies or vendors that worked with us on the project. And Angela's working on getting an updated invoice from STV. And then also looking into, um, possibly submitting a change order. Anything else anybody has? Nope? All right. We're good with that. We'll move on. Thank you. I don't know, Mark Allen, if you had anything or if we're just kinda hanging out to see if we have any questions.
I'd just like, it's kind of a pleasure.
Kind of a pleasure.
Yeah. Hopefully we can.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Great to have you on. And Angela, thanks again for being here. And I guess Durkin doesn't hang around any either. So thank you, everybody who was part of the training range and thanks for continuing along. Like I said, invoices and hopefully we'll get a CO soon. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, talk to me later about if you want to. So, um, talk to me later about if you want to look. So, uh, Rockwell and Johnson, um. I talked briefly to Dr. Carver today and the audit still in process.
Yeah, I could take that.
So, yeah. And there were some questions that came up, et cetera, and Teriyanski still hanging out to help. And so is Carolyn and they met. Answered some questions.
Good and good.
Put some more, um. Information to, uh, opposite school construction so they could continue looking at what they're looking at. And hopefully we get some money out of them soon. So the HVAC for the high school, as you know, the one, only one bitch came in and, um. Dr. Harson reviewing it with others like Dan and Brad, didn't feel comfortable going with it. So they're going to go back out. American.
No.
You'll know. It can, it can be nice to.
Uh, hang on.
Yeah.
I'll look it up.
At Stanford.
Yeah. Well, uh, because they're the ones that I kicked out of my place.
Sounds like a lot of people.
Yeah, uh, damn it.
That's how I am. Senior moment.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll.
The idea was so lame, but I, I actually, I went to tech school, looked for, for recreated.
Um, yeah, so that was going to be scaling back.
Ferguson on steroids.
Yeah.
I'm looking up the procurement committee.
Jesus Christmas.
Oh, why, why isn't there a? Bid documents, June sixth open. First minute. Here it is.
Problem is, I'm sure everyone, all the schools are doing the same thing. So.
Yes.
Yeah, but a lot of contracts is backed out as well. A lot of contractors I know backed out. And actually, one of the contractors that does work for me backed out and I talked to him and I asked him why. And it was a very simple thing is we had way too many contracts bidding on it.
Yeah.
There was no guarantee of anything in the future and it was just, it wasn't worth their time and effort for them.
But now we have guaranteed money to a certain point.
Right. But, but then if the, if, if. We have this much money that was approved at referendum and the grant is this much and the town gets to spend this much. And bids are coming in over that we're going to have to scale back. Why? Yeah.
And we, so, but also there was issues with the engineering and stuff like that when I heard it.
For this, for ours?
For the.
Or for others?
For something else up there. Trying to think of contract.
I, I have it. Let me go back to. I just looked up the procurement committee minutes and they don't have, who was at the video opening at the minutes? So let me see if I have it in the email. Anyways, so where we are with that, so we want to go back out to bid, but also they're putting out an RFP for. Uh, owner's rep for the project.
Got to have it.
Yeah. I think it's, it might be required for.
I think that was a requirement. I mean, I know Perna mentioned that, that he heard it was a, in Stanford, he had to do it first.
Allstate? Allstate?
No.
That's what.
Okay.
Allstate.
Allstate, yes.
Sorry.
Allstate Construction. They're the ones that put in the bid and they're out of Farmington. So, and again, I didn't look at all the.
And how much were they over off the top of your head?
It's a schedule. I can't remember. But anyways, where we are right now, while I let's continue to look through this. Here we go. Now, that's a whole bunch of weird, I don't like. Base bid total cost, three million, two hundred and ninety one dollars. Alternate number one, one million, eight hundred and fifty seven thousand. Alternate number two, two hundred and fifty six thousand. Alternate number three, eight hundred and ninety eight thousand. So I don't know what the, I, I, I don't know how they, I can't remember how they set it up, but if you want to look at all this, you could.
Yeah.
I can send it around. I think, I know that the bid went around to everybody or the RFP went around to everybody, but if you want to look at this, we can. That way we can hopefully advise on how maybe the next bid, the wording of that next bid package goes out. Because right now I know the RFP for the owner's rep is in, um, the town attorney for review. And then that's going to go out, but we also need to get the. Another bid factor on RFP out for this because there's a deadline.
Yeah.
And it's when the work is supposed to be done. And everybody's trying to get the work done at the same time. All the other schools.
Absolutely.
So how's that going to go? You know?
It's not. That's the problem.
Right. So, um. Like I said, I can, I mean, this is just, this was, I don't even know where, oh, I think Jen Barryell sent this to me. So if you want, anybody wants to look at that, I can send it.
Please do.
It's a lot of be nice if we could get the RFP and get everything.
Yeah.
Integrated.
Great. Because I was saying, I was thinking, you know, if you had your own rep on board, then they could help with writing the RFP.
That's just it.
But you can't wait that long, maybe.
That's what I, I could see.
Yeah. Yeah. Because we'll see.
That's where we think it gets.
Right. Because, but, you know, with the school projects, we have the owner's rep on just after we approved the plans and they would have been looking through the plans and.
Right.
So, yeah. And but again, I think there's a little sweating going on as far as this whole timeline. It has to be done by December, twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
And I don't know how long it's going to take. They have a bit of a schedule in here, Allstate, so. So we're going to have to, everybody can take a look at that when I send it around. And we're looking at going out to. Like a year or so from now. So mid twenty twenty five, I think. Sounds like a long time.
No.
Well, especially if they've got a X month wait on getting equipment.
That's, so that's something that I just went through. I just ordered a ton, about a hundred thousand dollars of spare parts.
Yeah.
For my company because fifteen to eighteen week lead times for the kennel stuff. So you can't have the kennels all down and doing it. So I just literally ordered about three thousand. With this Yorktown kennel. And it took a bit of fifteen weeks to.
Yeah. Really? So, all right. Well, so I'll. With our, he's going to need to get like input from us or is it last one was just basically? I think finance, the purchasing person is having more input on our these days, which is a good thing. So we'll see where that goes. And with the locker rooms, I kept waiting to hear back from Peter Eckert with a proposal. And then, uh, I talked to Rachel and then she talked to Dan. And Dan said. Pretty much what I said, we need something more official than an email saying, give us a repayment.
I just thought of companies, McKinney-McKenna. They're doing engineering on this project.
McKinney?
Yeah.
I've heard of them.
So anyways, with the locker rooms, we'll get into that, that. Um, we're waiting for a proposal from Peter Eckert to get started on at least schematics so that we have an idea of. What we're looking at. So then we can get some kind of number from him whilst he needs to finish that from structural and from M and P. And hopefully that'll come in soon. Anything else that we have.
Are we looking, if, if that comes to tuition, if that we do it the same way we did the hallway?
I don't think so. I think it might be more involved than hallway. I think we might need more.
I mean, but that, that system we use in, in those contractors, I mean, it, it worked out, right?
Yeah.
Pretty much involved with a lot.
But they use Peter plans.
Right. Well, I mean, I mean, once after our architectural, for the contractors, was, was it the Gordian group or something?
Yeah, it's Gordian. And then B and P, who then is a backover.
So Gordian, so Gordian hires the state bid and contract.
Right.
Which saves a lot of time. And I think it's also probably a reason.
But.
Yeah, since your approval.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure of that. I mean, there were some things that. Had to, they ever put that new threshold in?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. No, they were responsive with everything that, you know, wasn't right. They came right back in and fixed it. I'm, I'm not disappointed in how they received it. So.
I thought the workmanship was good.
No, they're, like I said, every time I called them on anything, he was.
But we would need to know from Gordian. How if we're paying. Because I know they, we had Gordian look at the locker rooms. Or it was B and P that, that made down there. I think with Colliers and me and I don't know, somebody else looking around and they were like, you need plans. They can't just go in and point like.
Right.
So we had plans for.
Yeah.
The lobby and we do all of the things that were in the plans. But there were some things that were part of the plans that, um, we changed around a little bit and then we ended up with things like. Um, yeah, we're still here. We had some things like, oh, like, um, the men's bathroom door opening up and there you are standing there.
Yes.
Like that. Um.
Eh, minor details.
So I, I don't know if it will work. We would have to look into that. I don't know if you used Gordian at all or anything else here. Was, but they, well, B and P did the floors, right? Yeah. But through Gordian, through Gordian. Okay. So. We can look into it. Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah, I think we'll get to that stage.
It's a smaller project, I think.
Yeah. Actually, I think I mentioned this at one of the meetings recently. Um, the women's bathroom, I don't know if they did the men's room too, but at the senior center were redone by Steve DeMarco. They just, he just came in, ripped up the floor. Changed. Oh, he poured it over top. Somebody changed. He had to rip up some part because there were three toilets in there, two regular ones and a handicap. And took all that out and put in two big sized handicap toilets. So he had to plug up some, um, plumbing. And then patch all that. And then he poured this epoxy floor over top, put the new stalls in, some new sinks. Looks bad. Paint, maybe. I don't know if he painted.
I don't know.
But that's because it was, you know, easy to do under a certain amount, you know, you can.
Supposed to be doing some stuff to the story.
So if it's under a certain amount, that's easy to do. You get a couple of votes and then you're good to go. With this, it's going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, lots different. So, yeah. All right. So one other thing, just, we have a new Robert's Rules of Order book. Somebody gave them to the town and gave them to the chairs of the commission. So we'll just have it sitting here like this every time we need to use it. I pretty much know kind of the generals of it and, um.
Have they revised it?
Um, it says newly revised in brief. I have a whole bunch.
It's got the new language.
Anyways, why have rules? That's the first chapter. All right.
If nothing else, I call for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, done.
Hey, before the.
I'm sure, I was here, he probably would have said some of the same things.